Welcome, everyone, to the October 20th City Council Public Hearing. Welcome to everyone here and everyone at home. We have two hearings this evening. The first one is the public comment on the potential removal of Traffic Island at Crest Drive and Lincoln Street. The manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an opportunity for the City Council to hear from community members before deciding on a proposal to remove the Traffic Island at the intersection of Crest Drive and Lincoln Street. The Traffic Island was installed as part of the improvements to Crest Drive, Story Boulevard, and Friendly Street in 2010. The design of the improvements were developed by the Crest Drive Community Team and approved by the City Council after a public hearing.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public comment period must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public comment. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have three people signed up for this. First is David Kolb, followed by David Sonnixon. David?
Good evening. I'm David Kolb from Eugene in Ward Two. I'm also the Chair of the Crest Drive Citizens Association, and the association has not taken an official position on this issue, but we did run a poll of members which split about two-thirds, one-third in favor of removal, with good arguments on both sides, especially about safety of pedestrians and bicycles for those who wish to keep it, safety of cars and drivers for those who wish to remove it. And of those who wish to remove it, there was a sizable number who wanted to add some other kind of traffic slowdown calming device, whether it's speed bumps or something. And I just thought that that picture would be worth presenting to the council.
Thank you.
And one question that was raised by several people was, if you remove the round island, would they also be removing the two linear traffic calming devices that are just above it on the street? No, okay, that's what we thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Sonnixon, followed by Diane Thurlo.
Good evening, David Sonnixon, Eugene, Ward Three. I favor a speed table at that site if the Traffic Island is removed, especially considering people coming downhill, going essentially easterly. If it were a flat surface with no speed attenuation device, it seems to me that would be extremely dangerous. There would be lots of fast traffic potential for going down toward the Donald Street intersection. And the street is very, very steep there. It, I believe, gets even steeper. And last week, I attended the work session, and I was very disappointed to hear two councilors that I respect very much state that this vote on the street design, overall Crest Street design, was one that they regretted. I think those are beautiful streets. I think they retain the rural character of that neighborhood. It was a great public process. The narrow streets have wonderful bioswales on either side that are the envy of any other neighborhood. And so I'm delighted when I walk a dog up there at the way the streets function. The visual context is one that slows people down. There's no center divider line. It works, and I am proud of the council vote. Thank you.
Diane Thurlo is next.
My name is Diane Thurlo. I don't know my ward number. Apologize. I'm here on behalf of getting rid of the roundabout. I think it's really dangerous. My husband has a truck. If he's driving down Crest and he wants to turn on Lincoln, you have to go all the way around the roundabout to turn, and he can't make it. And he doesn't have one of the bigger trucks. He has a pickup, medium size, and he can't get around it. As far as people on bicycles, I actually think it's probably much more dangerous to have that roundabout there. If there's a bicycle coming anywhere near that roundabout and a car, there's no way in the world, I mean, the bicyclists would have to just get off their bike and wait, and I don't see how that enhances the safety to bicyclists at all. I have a car. I can barely get through it. I think because it's so, such narrow passageway, I think it makes people skittish to even drive through it, which leads to more potential for accidents, actually. I don't know who thought of that, but I think it's a disaster. And I guess we're not here to discuss anything else on that street in terms of improvements, so I'll just leave my remarks to that particular thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask council, yes, Councilwoman Brown?
Yeah. I appreciate, David, your point about the situation and all the different parts that are attractive there. I think there's a lot about it that is also attractive. It doesn't have to have curbs. It doesn't have to have sidewalks. I think the rural character is very nice. For me, one of the biggest problems that I have with it is that we agreed to nine-foot travel lanes instead of the typical standard ten-foot or wider. And the problem that creates is LTD buses, 4J buses, they can't pass each other because the lanes are so narrow. So we could have had it look a lot like it does now, and that probably would have been okay if we had just been able to go with what the staff had recommended, which was a ten-foot travel lane. By going to nine feet, I think we got too narrow. So what I'm disappointed, it's not with everything, but there's a lot about it that I think we probably could have done better. And if I could go back and make those lanes wider, not add a lot of curbs and gutters and everything else, we could do a lot to make that a whole lot better. So that's kind of what the thinking is. So I appreciate you bringing it up, because, yeah, I don't want to sound like the whole thing's a disaster, but there's a lot about it that probably should be fixed.
The next public hearing is an ordinance concerning establishment of a tax on marijuana. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on a proposed ordinance that would tax marijuana sales in the event that Measure 91 passes at the November election. If council decides to adopt such a tax, then the council should act prior to the November election. That means that council will need to take final action at the October 27 meeting. In order to do that, council will need to decide tonight whether it wants to pursue the tax, and if so, provide direction on the specifics of the tax. Options are included in the agenda item summary.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have six people signed up to speak. First up is Mary Ann Catherine Glende. Thank you.
I am speaking in favor of a tax. My name is Mariana Catherine Glende, and I live in the University District. I don't know what ward that is. I have a master's degree in public health focusing in substance abuse and mental health issues, detection, diagnosis, and prevention from the University of Texas School of Public Health. I have a master's degree from the California Institute of Intellectual Studies and Clinical Psychology. While earning that degree, I worked for a grant for the community substance abuse services for the city and county of San Francisco Department of Public Health on a federally-funded grant that did solo landscape community organizing focusing on the 11 target nearest neighborhoods for substance abuse in San Francisco. So I know my stuff, and I am deeply concerned about this new marijuana law, and I'm deeply concerned that it is going to increase utilization and suffering in Eugene and Oregon as a whole if it passes. Thirty percent of the population hallucinates and dissociates from marijuana. The law does not bar smoking of marijuana. There's already smoking of marijuana in public places. So thirty percent of the population is at risk of having a mental health crisis secondarily to being exposed to casual contact with marijuana smoke. As I understand it, Peace Health is already overburdened as the primary provider of emergency psychiatric services in Marion County. Marijuana has been documented to sap motivation. It is neurotoxic to individuals under the age of 25. It is also a potent pharmaceutical that can be used for great benefit. I worked as an intern at the AIDS Health Project in San Francisco during the '90s before we had antivirals, and AIDS was a magical drug because our patients who were dying of cachexia secondary to AIDS would magically gain weight on marijuana. So I'm not opposed to the medical use in a controlled setting of marijuana and cannabis. Furthermore, children who are given CBD frequently do well on CBD, which is a subset of the cannabinoid plant. On a personal note, when I smoked marijuana in college at UCSD in the '70s, I was one of that 30 percent. So I may end up crazy at University District Hospital from exposure to casual contact. And we need to have a tax linked to the police department's funding so that the police have motivation to enforce the law and keep people from smoking marijuana and maintain taxation.
Thank you. Next up is, I'm going to try to do all of this, Chief Baby Rodney Lee Swiftfoot Augustine Retsman.
Auguste Retsman.
Okay.
I'm Swiftfoot. Well, I'm back. I'm going to behave myself tonight. I get three minutes. I support a tax, but not for the same reason she supports the tax. I support a tax because it would include education about the herbal benefits of marijuana being one of the top 500 eastern herbal medicines, eastern, China, Korea, Tokyo, and all those little places over there. Those guys have been smoking this crap for years, and they're living longer than we are. And we want to suppress marijuana because of psychotic, what was that, ability to go freaking out on people? I freak out on people when I ain't got my pot. You can ask any cop in this town. They know me, Rodney Lee Retsman. That's my western name. Baby Rodney Lee Retsman is my western name. I don't go by that too often, but I'll give it tonight. That's power for you folks. Now, I don't want to mean to piss on anybody's granola any longer than kitty. Oh, excuse me. Vote for the Patriot, because I'm running for mayor. It's a write-in. You'll have to figure it out yourself on the Patriot. You've done a good job, though. You really have. And I know you would support this tax, and not for the same benefits. Don't be misled about police motivation. I have been beaten the hell out of by these cops in this town, and I am suing these bastards, too, and Lang County, and the state of Oregon, and the federal government of the United States of America for gross neglect of jurisprudence. Gross neglect of jurisprudence. Excuse me. No problem. Albeit, you know, it's our will. We're going to have our pot to smoke, and don't make us buy it illegally to afford more police brutality towards anybody who's trespassing on a public sidewalk, walking down saying, "Praise God, praise God, Allah Akbar, Assalamu Alakum." Well, excuse me, so I speak a little Arabic once in a while. I ain't bitching people out. Quit arresting me and leave my bag alone. That's my sunshine. I want my pot. I want to see it on the streets. It's going to calm a lot of people down. You guys can go home and have your little martinis and shit. Well, how about having a martini before you come to work? I'll bet a lot of folks do that. Some of us need to sit there and have a martini while we're working. That's fine, if that's what gets you through. Well, what about my pot? Why can't I pray with my marijuana?
All right. Next up is Summer Manier, followed by Misha Seymour.
Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Summer Manier. I'm a student at Lang Community College. So should this measure pass, I urge the council to invest 20 percent into Lang Community College. For a moment, think back to how much you paid per credit when you were in college. Now triple it. Lang students pay $98 a credit as of this fall. Poverty in Lang Community College is roughly 27 percent. Poverty on Lang's campus is roughly 68 percent. Community colleges are intended to be an option for traditional and non-traditional students alike, such as low-income parents and members of the community. It's a demographic of people representing all ages and backgrounds. If we are to bridge the gap between lower and middle class, it is imperative we make that an accessible option. How can students justify furthering their debt to receive an education if they can't even meet their basic needs? The Oregon Opportunity Grant does not provide for the vast need among community college students. Even with an increase in that funding, our system is not ideal, and bright minds and ideas slip through the cracks as people turn away from education because it's not in the price range. Education does not end at 12th grade. Everyone in this room knows it can be very difficult to rise above the poverty level in today's society without higher education. We need to set a precedent that higher education is equally as valuable as K through 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Misha Seymour is next, followed by Scott Compton.
I am...
Want to introduce yourself, Misha?
Yeah, my name is Misha Seymour, and I am against this tax on marijuana. I have the alternative modest proposal instead, a bad idea fee for city councilors, which would be $500 for the first violation, and then $1,000 for the second one, and so forth. For example, the Capstone Project, $15 million tax break for developers. At the same time, the library hours are getting cut, I mean, have been cut. City Hall to spend maybe $30 million more to, when a lot of people wanted City Hall to be fixed up. But the economic bad decisions in terms of the people in town, I mean, in terms of city councilors, for example, with Hyundai, Hynix, to give tax breaks to developers for hundreds of millions of dollars, which doesn't help people. And I think that this proposal for a bad idea fine would be something that would maybe help the councilors and maybe the city manager and the mayor to realize that, for example, the thing with the, the other thing with the EMX, I mean, the mayor really, I think she wrote the thing on that, and it was not popular. It was not a popular thing. There were 80 percent of the people at the meeting that were against it, the extension. And so I think that let's be honest about things for once. And, I mean, a chicken is not exactly an elephant. They're not exactly the same thing. And I think that, as my colleague said, there are a lot of people in this town suffering, and we could do better, and I think that we should. Thank you.
Scott Compton is next, followed by David Raymond.
Letting me speak to you today. My name's Scott Compton, and I'm from Eugene. Before this body, there's a tremendous opportunity to support community colleges who have had budget cuts this year, year after year. If we want to address drug abuse in Oregon, then we ought to support folks through allowing them to gain an economic foundation. This is why I support 20 percent of the tax revenue if it is passed from this tax to go to Lang Community College. Police agencies, mental health facilities, and rehabilitation centers can address problems such as drug addiction or driving under the influence after the problem has happened. However, education addresses the problem beforehand. The likelihood that a person would turn to drug abuse or dealing skyrockets if they don't hold a college degree. Folks need to not only have a mental foundation to not let drug abuse impact their life, but they also need an economic foundation. Community colleges help those at risk in other regards as well. I've personally worked with a man who was transitioning back from prison. Being surrounded by like-minded folks who were passionate about success helped him. He was taken away from negative influences and had his time filled with his job and homework. Community college helped him transition from life in prison to life in the working world. Community colleges also directly impact high schoolers who are unsure about what to do when they get out of school. Personally, I was unsure of what I should do when I got out of high school, so I took the most accessible path and went to community college. But if tuition continually goes up and the level of services offered go down, community colleges may no longer be the most accessible path for folks. Funding for community colleges is highly abysmal, and only two of every 10 students who are eligible actually get Oregon's only need-based aid, the Oregon Opportunity Grant. Folks need a way to get ahead in life so they aren't pulled back in life. This is why I support Lang Community College. For these reasons, if this tax is imposed, then I support 20 percent of the revenue going to Lang Community College.
Thank you. Last up is David Raymond.
My name is David Raymond, and I'm from the Bethel District. I don't know what ward that is. Which one of you guys admitted to that one anyways? I've been pretty much involved in the marijuana issue, from the industrial hemp issue to the Measure 91, and I have a website out there. You can go find out all this same information I'm going to show you. Here's your little bill here, your little agenda for the agenda. How many people are familiar with, let's start out with Senate Bill Number 676, which says legalization of industrial hemp in the state of Oregon, which was signed by Governor Ted Koolen-Gausse August of 2009, and we still don't have a seed in the ground? That's an issue we need to talk about later on. The next one we got, that was this one here, and I'll leave it back for you guys to go find it. The next one is Measure 91. How many people here have read Measure 91? I want to see your hands. One, two, three. Okay, that's less than 50 percent. In here, there's a provision for the money that's going to be taxed by the state of Oregon. The money goes to education, healthcare, and public safety. I talked with Floyd Prozansky when they had the marijuana thing here, and he wants the money. So 35 percent of the money goes to public safety. Where that money goes is 15 percent goes to the state police, 10 percent goes to the city police of each city, not just Eugene, and 10 percent goes to the sheriff's department. So I don't understand why a bunch of people are upset about money going to the police, because what we're going to need is if the issue, we're going to need more police out there, granted. City of Springfield wants to say there's going to be more buzz driving. I almost beg to differ, because I don't really think because of the medical marijuana issue and how people have been smoking all these years that it's going to really increase a level to what everybody's afraid of, okay? The OLCC is going to be in charge, but I understand they're going to take the words wineries, breweries, brew houses out of their legislation that deals with those things. They're going to put in marijuana facilities, okay? The tax money is going to go for education, healthcare, and public safety. It should not go no place else. It shouldn't go to fix City Hall. It shouldn't go to fix streets. It shouldn't go to fix whatever we got, roundabouts, whatever you want to talk about, okay? There's an unbelievable amount of things that we don't need to spend this money on. People are concerned about kids getting the marijuana, okay? I'm concerned about kids getting marijuana. That's why it shouldn't be called adult use, because it is only for adult use. We need to get the words straight here on this whole issue, okay? So here's 36 pages of Measure 91. If you want to find a video on there, it's called Stirring the Pot, that Floyd Prozansky and Anthony Johnson and Paul Stanford put, was that Cosmic Pizza? They were there talking about it. So anyways, videoOregon.org. Thank you.
Close the public hearing. Thank everyone for coming this evening. And I'm going to ask if there are any questions, and then we're going to make a decision about whether you want to pursue any further conversation on this topic or not.
I have a question. Just, well, I guess it is kind of a question. I'm sorry. In reading over the ordinance, I noticed that the term medical marijuana is included. In order to have that removed, is it just a simple motion of move to delete in the ordinance and any reference to medical marijuana, or how would I go about doing that? Because I do not believe that we should be taxing medical marijuana, and I'd like to get that out of the ordinance.
Should the council decide to proceed with the ordinance at all, that would be a motion to make to say, okay, it's only going to deal with recreational use. If the council decides to proceed, we actually need more direction than that, but that would be one way to say, go in this direction, not the whole thing.
Thank you.
So I think the most straightforward thing, unless you have more discussion that you want to have, is for if someone wants, if you want to pursue, have a work session and continue to work on this topic, someone needs to make a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Councilwoman Brown?
I want to discuss the motion. I think we should drop the whole thing right now. I mean, it's clear to me that, you know, first of all, the measure hasn't passed. Second of all, the OLCC will be, you know, have the oversight of the whole program, just like they do with alcohol. They already have their bureaucracy in place, their inspectors, their enforcement team. I don't think the city needs to get involved with that, because it's going to have to set up a whole new thing, and it's going to take a lot, it's going to take city manpower. It's going to create a lot of expenses for the city to try to collect this tax. The city attorney told us at a previous work session that he and another attorney, Jerry Lids, thought that, you know, that measure will definitely be challenged and probably be overturned, in my correct. Is that, that's what I took away from your comments?
I don't know whether...
That there's a low probability of it surviving a legal challenge?
If somebody challenges a tax ordinance like the one that you're considering, then yes, we believe that unless the legislature adopts something during the next session, that a court would strike down a tax ordinance.
Thank you. Yeah, so why would we proceed down this path? It's going to be taxed by the state. It's in, I mean, if you read through the ballot measure, the taxing provision is included in it, as well as where all the tax money will be directed. Forty percent go to education. The rest is going to go to healthcare and education programs about abusive drugs, and also to law enforcement, and all that money will trickle back to the communities. So it's already going to be taxed. Now, I just feel like if you start piling taxes on, which probably won't survive a challenge anyway, but let's just say that, you know, the county adds a tax, now the city adds a tax, and the state has a tax, it's going to be so expensive to buy marijuana recreational or medical that the black market, I mean, why would anyone buy the legal stuff? The black market will continue to thrive. It will get all, that's where all the revenue, most of the revenue will go. And so, you know, these tax receipts, we're looking at it as a golden egg, you know, wow, this is going to solve all of our problems. We're going to tax marijuana. It won't work out that way. The receipts from the legal tax will be so small, and, you know, the police will still have to deal with the black market. It's, I just see it as the wrong way to go. And, you know, we don't, we don't tax antibiotics... And, you know, we don't, we don't tax antibiotics, we don't tax aspirin, we don't tax methadone, we don't tax alcohol or tobacco, recreational drugs. We don't tax those. Why would we, why would we think about taxing marijuana? Especially when we don't have a, you know, a structure, an infrastructure set to actually do that and run the project. I just, I just think that it's not the way to go.
Counselor Sirret?
Thank you.
Can I get in, Mayor?
Yes.
So I'm also not in favor of pursuing this any further, but I do wanna compliment the students who came to advocate on behalf of funding community colleges and looking for ways to direct more funding there. I think that's a very worthy cause, and continue with your advocacy. I do not know, I have not read the measure yet, but I will open up my voter's guide if any of that education funding is going into community colleges, or if it's strictly K through 12. So that's unfortunate if it's just K through 12. But I'm, similar to Counselor Brown, I don't see a big urgency to tax this potential new source of revenue if, we don't know if the measure will pass, we don't have mechanisms set up to collect this kind of tax, and I'm satisfied that if it does pass, that the revenue is collected through the state, we will get our share of those, and I'm fine with sticking with that. So I'm not gonna support a tax at the local level.
Counselor Taylor is next, followed by Counselor Clark and Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. No, I think we should drop the whole thing. I think that it's already going to be taxed, and a lot of that money goes to education, which will benefit all of us, every community. And we don't have the way to collect it set up, and I just think, I think that one of the big reasons for passing this measure is that there won't be so much crime related to marijuana, and won't tax, tax in another sense, our law enforcement to the same extent. If we tax, if we overtax it, then as has already been said, as Counselor Brown said, first, it will cause people to continue to buy it illegally. And I don't think we want to do that. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. I think what they've said is completely in line with my thinking on this. I think we ought to drop it right now, but not only is it a bad idea because it's inconsistent with the, some of the reasons that people may vote to pass this measure in the first place, but it sets a really bad precedent. So I think it's a very bad idea for us to tax this city loan.
Counselor Pryor?
Just for my, just to make sure, we do not currently have a local tax on cigarettes?
That's true.
And we don't have currently a local tax on alcohol or any of those other things?
That's also true.
There is a local tax on alcohol?
Gas is the only thing.
Okay, gasoline, but in other words, alcohol, tobacco, those kinds of things, we don't currently have taxes on.
That's true.
So gasoline is really the only thing we have a tax on. I was intrigued with the conversation initially, and I was interested in going to this public hearing, because I did wanna hear what the public had to say. But I am also intrigued or moved by the notion that this is, this would be a precedent-setting action in terms of creating a tax at the local level for a kind of commodity that typically we don't tax for, other than gasoline being the only exception. I'm less really persuaded by the argument that it's gonna drive everybody to the black market. That may or may not happen. Predicting the future is always an interesting exercise. But I am very concerned about what kinds of precedents we set. If it's going to be overturned in court, that also is an argument for spending a lot of time on something that might be thrown out, but once again, it's predicting the I think for me, probably what it boils down to is whether or not there would really be a legitimate and useful revenue opportunity here. And I think legitimate and relevant are things that go together. Since the state would be taxing and the cities would receive a certain level of revenue already, then it's not like we're not gonna get anything. Something would come through. So we would be looking at trying to generate additional revenue on top of that. And I'm trying to weigh the benefit versus the cost of doing that. And I think ultimately, I'm inclined to not support continuing to pursue some sort of a taxing option, probably for both of those two reasons, that we're already gonna get money from the state, and I think that's probably legitimate and consistent and reasonable. And I don't wanna create a new precedent by starting a tax on this commodity, which could then lead to us thinking about taxing all kinds of different commodities. We may start taxing Fritos, and we might start taxing, you know, all different stuff, and I'm not inclined to wanna go in that direction. So, as some of the others here, I think we should just end it right now.
So I believe the motion was to, oh, sorry, Counselor Lincoln, did you, you had your hand up?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I think it's likely the state would actually preempt the local city or county taxes that would be imposed. It's also unclear whether or not it would survive a legal challenge. Could you expound on that a little bit, why that's true, so, or you believe that, that's your opinion?
The measure contains two provisions that could be clearer, which is why I say there's, you know, it's a gray area, and it's possible that the court would uphold a local tax. But as we read those, they have language such as, "No city or county may impose a tax on," I think it's something like the sale of marijuana. That could be interpreted to mean, "No city or county may adopt a tax." And if you adopt the tax, and the reason why a lot of communities are considering this now is because if you adopt it before the measure takes effect, and if the language in the measure actually was, "No city or county may adopt," then our argument to uphold such a tax would be, we've already adopted. The measure prohibits, in essence, a future adoption. It doesn't retroactively invalidate a prior adoption. But the language in the measure is not, "You can't adopt." The language is, "You shall not impose." And the way we think a court would interpret that would be, it means impose as of the day that the measure takes effect, or after the measure takes effect. We would be imposing a tax if you adopt this kind of ordinance. So it's the language in the measure itself. The other reason why I've said it's possible that doing something now might be valid in the future is because there's the possibility that the legislature will meet next session and amend the measure to actually grandfather in, one possibility is grandfather in ordinances that were adopted prior to the November election. Another possibility is the legislature could just decide to remove that preemption altogether. And as, I can't remember which of you said it, we're just talking about predicting the future, and I'm not going to predict what the legislature's going to do. So there's the possibility that the legislature does something, but the way we read the measure right now, the language there that says, "No city or county may impose a tax," we think that a court would interpret that language to say, even if you adopt it now, it's not valid.
Is it also problematic that we're, we'd be taxing something that currently is illegal, and having our law be contingent on something that may happen in the future?
No, because the way the ordinance would actually get crafted is, it would be dependent on the measure taking effect, Measure 91 taking effect.
Yeah, so it can be contingent, that'd be okay?
Correct. And by the way, it's, it would only be, to continue to address that point, it would be lawful under state law, it would remain illegal under federal law.
Right. I guess I'm also concerned that it won't be a whole lot of money. I think the estimates in Colorado were way overestimated, and in Oregon, it's eventually be 20, potentially $20 million, a lot. So I'm also concerned about imposing a tax on medical marijuana, this has medical marijuana included in it. Concerned about piling on to the cost and thereby bolstering the black market. I'm not sure that's a great concern, but it's a concern. And how would we set this up to collect it? We don't have this kind of infrastructure. How would that work?
I don't know how we would do that. If the council chose to move forward, of course, we would have to figure that out, and if it were imposed.
Yeah, I guess I'm also concerned about the precedence of taxing a commodity. We do tax gasoline, and we do actually use the money for a very specific purpose with a very clear nexus, which is roads. I might be persuaded if we were to limit the proceeds used in the taxes to drug prevention, education about this stuff, and maybe dedicate it towards wet beds, which is a problem we have in this community for a long time, and we don't have any funding source for it. But I sincerely doubt we will all agree on what the tax proceeds should go towards tonight. So, that's right, Stan.
So I think the question before you is, to pursue a tax, to pursue the further discussion on a tax on marijuana. And so, all those in favor of pursuing this conversation indicate by voting yes. One, two. In opposition? One, two, three, four, five. Mike?
Nope.
Six in opposition, so it does not count. That, we are through with the business of the day.